Boarding in progress.
Uh, Madam Chair, if you are back, the floor is all yours.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, let's do a quick roll call of Mr. Stenbridge.
That guy. Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Berberaza?
Here.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Our coordination would be pretty good. Present.
Great. Uh, floor, your Mr. Stenbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the last of the eleven AM cases, we have case BOA one four two one eight zero eight, the address of one Mount Vernon Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, sir. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Sean McCormick of Davis, Mahn and DiAgostino, and I represent the applicant DB Delivery Mass LLC. So this is a request to open a delivery-only cannabis business at one Mount Vernon Street. Uh, next slide, please. So the applicant is a certified economic empowerment and social equity applicant. Uh, they have been in business in Wareham for a year doing delivery, so this is an experienced operator. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the zoning code refusal. The two issues here are, uh, but there, the building has been used as a non-conforming use. It was used as a sort of warehouse and processing facility for food products with a delivery component. They are asking to change from that non-conforming use to a new non-conforming use, which is a cannabis delivery. Uh, the second issue is it is less than half a mile from an existing medical cannabis facility. Um, next slide, please. So the, so on the separation, you know, the, the, the delivery-only model, it, it doesn't have any retail component. It doesn't have any customers showing up. It doesn't have any branding or signage on the exterior of the building. So it is really going to be almost indistinguishable from the, from the prior non-conforming use, which, which was at the site. Um, it, it really is not going to implicate any of the concerns that animated the, the half-mile separation between cannabis businesses because the, the models are just so different. It's really not a retail establishment. The idea is that, that passenger vehicles would, would leave the site a couple of times a day, go do their rounds in Boston, greater Boston, uh, and, and return to the site. Um, one of the features of this, um, property that make it so attractive to this business is that we are able to do all deliveries, like wholesale deliveries, and also employee parking and storage of their delivery fleet inside the building. There is, um, almost seven thousand square feet of parking available inside the building, uh, so there's not going to be any increased parking demand uh, in the, in the neighborhood as a result of this project. Uh, next slide. So this shows the proposed site. You can see the building takes up almost the entirety of the lot. Uh, again, there are no proposed changes to the building. It, it's going to be used as is. It's, it's basically, um, you know, ideal for this type of use. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so this is a, this is a floor plan. There's going to be storage areas that are able to accommodate wholesale delivery uh, inside in a secure area off the street. Uh, the parking and vehicle loading can take place inside the building. There'll be secure storage areas. They've got a, um, a, a security consultant. They have a host community agreement with the city of Boston, so they've been through that process. They've been through the process of community outreach meetings. They have, uh, the support of the McCormick Civic Association. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, to ju- just to reiterate, you know, the, the, the business is going to be main, uh, confined to the actual building. There really shouldn't be any visible, um, uh, impacts on the, on the outside. No, you know, product, no branding, no, no, um, customers lining up or anything like that. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, there was a traffic report commissioned, uh, using the city's technical assistance program. Uh, Fosse O'Neill concluded that there's really going to be a negligible impact on traffic. The, the delivery model that they use is, is not, is not like a pizza place where you're going back and forth every time there's a new order. The, the vehicles are loaded, they leave the facility, um, once or twice a day. They're out for, for hours at a time, and then they come back. So they're predicting that there are going to be twenty-four vehicle trips per day, which is, um, you know, would be a barely noticeable impact. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, there's no unfinished, unpackaged cannabis products, and there's not going to be any issue with smell. Um, all loading and unloading will be indoors. There's not going to be an issue there. The, um, there are no customers, uh, no public access. There's going to be a secure location without any of the impacts from, uh, from an in-person retail site. Uh, next slide, please. This is a, um, this is a rendering. The, the applicant has been working with the Civic Association and the, um, and the mural crew to come up with a, a mural design for the outside of the building. Um, uh, this is, you know, this is just a, a rendering, but I think it's going to be, you know, a, a nice addition to this, uh, existing building in the neighborhood. And, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Uh, what's, what's their economy or what was the last, uh, use of the space?
It was, it was some, it was, it was related to food. We, I think it was a bakery or bakery products, but, but they, uh, there were food products stored on-site, and they were, and they would, uh, be out for delivery using, uh, delivery trucks.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I, I'm just going to ask if the proponents already have, uh, approval from the, the cannabis board.
So, so they're in the midst of that, uh, the, the, they, they have, um, they would have some steps to go through after they get zoning approval. Um, I, I think so, so that, that's the answer. Is they're not fully approved yet. They can't get fully approved, um, absent zoning approval, but they have been through the process once for their, uh, outlet in Wareham.
I'm sorry, Javier, is that accurate? Because I, I feel like we don't usually see cases until after they've been approved.
Yeah, uh, my relation is that for the cannabis, cannabis board, they would need to be approved, send it to us, and then it'd be presenting approval, but I'm not sure of a process where we need to do approval and it goes back for more, for more approval from the cannabis board.
So, uh, I'm sorry. So, so the, the Boston, the, the Boston Cannabis Board has given the host community agreement. Uh, I, I, I was confusing this with the state cannabis commission.
Okay, so you have approval from the Bo- the Boston Ca- whatever it's called, Cannabis Board? Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Valencia?
Yes, and when did you get that approval? I was trying to find the documentation and I couldn't.
I believe it was approximately six weeks ago. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, can we take public testimony?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ross Cocker with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office held in a butter meeting on January tenth, where concerns over traffic congestion and antisocial behavior were expressed. The proponents went on to meet with local civic association where they received support from the group. At this time, we'd like to defer to the, uh, judgment of this board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGyker, and City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go and recognize support.
Council of Land's office, the hand is raised. May I have stepped away? Um, Jeffrey? Is that Jeff Hampton?
Yes, thank you, Jess. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, PPA. We recommend a denial on this because it's a three-family zoning district. Uh, I know from living in the neighborhood how that building's been for years, and I know it's been industrial and commercial, uh, but it is still a very hardcore residential zoning district. Uh, so we recommend a denial. One other thing that was brought to our attention on the refusal letter, it doesn't say anything about delivery. It just says that it's going to be a cannabis establishment. So if the board were to approve it, I would ask that it would be for delivery only and no sales because the zoning letter, the refusal letter doesn't state that.
Thank you. I was wondering the same thing, so thanks for calling that out. Any other, uh,
I have no additional raised hands.
Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of denial, um, given that it's not in character with the residential use of the neighborhood.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, no.
Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Shepherd?
Sorry, no.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
No.
Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair also votes no. The motion does not carry.
Madam Chair, this is Javier. Um, if you would like to request another motion, you can. If not, the next motion you can request is the, the missile without prejudice.
Denial without prejudice. Um,
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, do we have another motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. I think the delivery operator use is appropriate given, um, the non-conforming nature of the property. Um, it seems to operate similarly to the, what I heard described as like a bakery wholesale operation. Um, so I would make a motion to approve with the proviso that it is delivery operator only, not retail establishment. What Mr. Hampton said.
No, no, um, on-site sales.
Correct.
Okay.
A second motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Mr. Langham?
No, no.
Okay. Boy, I hate it being left up to me. The chair also votes no. I, I agree that the nature of the neighborhood does not seem to lend itself, so motion does not carry. I think that's it, right? Is that it, Javier, or am I supposed to call another vote?
Uh, at this point, since two motions have failed, they would be considered denied unless someone wants to put a motion uh, do you want the denied without prejudice, but right now it would be denied at this point.
Okay, I think we can move on unless someone feels strongly. Okay, let's keep going.
Um, we will now head to the, uh, rediscussions scheduled for eleven thirty. First being case BOA one four zero six two six seven, the address of one sixty-six Chelsea Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street, here on behalf of the owner of one sixty-six Chelsea Street, Gabriel Costano, the applicant, and I also have David Choi, who is the attorney on the project. Uh, this, uh, proposal is to change the occupancy from an existing six-unit building um, to add an additional top-floor unit, uh, for the owner of his private residence to a seven-family dwelling, uh, to also renovate the structure. If we could leave it on this slide, uh, no, one more, Ambassador, sorry. Uh, next slide. Yes, right here. This, uh, is an overview of the general area. You can see the red highlighted dot is the existing structure. Uh, behind us, just to look for precedent, is, um, the Paris Flats, a Paris Street apartment complex. That is a four-story, uh, multi-unit, thirty-unit, uh, building in the rear directly behind us. As we start to go down the street, two down from us, there's a four-story condo building called the Paris Flats. Uh, we also, um, have one fifty-six, one sixty Chelsea Street, two forty-five Chelsea Street that was recently approved for a similar building, uh, at one thirty-four Chelsea Street. Um, the units one through six are already pre-existing units. Um, this fourth-floor unit, um, would be a three-bedroom. Uh, it would be fourteen hundred and sixty-four square foot unit for the owner. This building would have two full means of aggression, be fully sprinkled. Uh, as we worked with the community as well as Maverick Central Neighborhood Association to get their support, we agreed that the top floor would be pulled back, um, eight feet from the, from the top of the bay, um, and would also be pulled in two foot, three inches on either side of the building. Um, so as we, uh, so from the, the front of the building, uh, the mast would be lessened by pulling it back. So it would be fifteen feet pulled away from Chelsea Street. Um, just to go over some of the violations that were mentioned, this is a three-F district, although there's multifamily residential buildings around us, uh, so the seven units would require a use variance. Uh, the FAR, uh, existing is two point four five. We would be proposing two point nine, uh, for an FAR variance. Uh, we, uh, at our highest point would be at forty-three feet, nine inches, so we would need, um, height variance in feet and in stories, and then the other violations like parking, rear yard, we're not changing the contours of the building going back or anything additionally on the sides. Um, all of the other violations for front yard and rear yard and parking would be pre-existing, uh, violations. We are also, uh, just a minute away from airport T-station, making this a great commuter building as well. I, I can pause to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? I just want to confirm, Mr. Drago, it, it appears that this is, would be one of the only four stories in, in the, uh, the area. Is that accurate?
No, it's not, Madam Chair. Sorry, I, I had outled off a few, but direct,
There is a four-story, um, I'm trying to find the address. It's called Paris Flats.
That's two down, um, um, Ms. Berberaza. So directly to the left of us, that's a condo building. That's four. At two forty-five Chelsea, it's hard to see. That's recessed. I actually represented a client about that approved about a year ago. One forty-two Chelsea, one eighty-six Paris, one eighty-nine Paris. So there are a number. I think why it's a little misleading is they all have a pullback if they're going to have the fourth floor, so it's,
Majority, majority is three stories, but there are some anomalies that are four-story high for, for my colleagues to know.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions from the board? Okay, with that, let's, uh, open up to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venetez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a butter meeting for this project in November tenth, twenty twenty-two. Noah Butter's attended the meeting. The applicant also met with Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in December and January of this year. The group voted in support of this project, and at this time, our office would like to defer all judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sebastian?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Once again, my name is Sebastian Parra. I'm the East Boston DA, City Councilor Gabriela Coleta. Based on Maverick Central Neighborhood Association's vote, the council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval, uh, with PPA Design Review. I think the project fits within its context, and I'm glad to see that Frank stepped back on the fourth floor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
At this time, Madam Chair, I'd like to, um, ask if, for the one PM hearings, if there are any withdrawals or deferrals being requested. Hearing none, then we'll, um, move on into, um, back to the blue discussions at eleven thirty AM. Case number BOA one four three two five two seven with the address of one eighty-four Culver Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Richard Linz, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner for the project at one eighty-four Culver Street. Uh, if we can jump ahead to the third slide, that's probably a good place to start, so I could at least orient the members with some, uh, context for the area. Uh, Madam Chair, this site will involve the combination of two lots. Uh, when those lots are combined, uh, the total square footage would be over fifteen thousand square feet, uh, which is close to four times the known lot size for this district. I say that in the importance of, of laying that out first for the, for the, uh, for the board is to also, uh, point out some of the surrounding context for the area. As you can see off in the distance, both at the top of the photo, that is Constitution Beach. That is our nearest setback to the rear. Uh, to, to our left is the MBTA right-of-way, and to the right uh, is a vacant area which has been recently developed multifamily use. Uh, this site currently sits at the end of a dead-end street, which is known as Culver Street, and our building, uh, that we are proposing to demolish and replace is on the left-hand side. If we can scroll down to the next slide. Uh, perhaps one more slide would be helpful. So the existing building, uh, sits on the first lot. The lot immediately adjacent to it would be combined. As I mentioned, that it's a little over fifteen thousand square feet when put together. Our proposal would be for a seven-unit multifamily dwelling, uh, on this site. Now, we fully understand that this site is located in a two-F four-thousand district, but, uh, as I had mentioned, the combining of these lots, uh, would, would result in a lot that exceeds what the allowable density is essentially for this neighborhood. A two-F four-thousand district contemplates one unit, uh, for every two thousand square feet. At seven units, we feel that we are below, uh, what the, uh, density would be, uh, had the configuration of this lot itself, uh, or was, was arranged in a way that had front, you know, enough frontage on Culver Street. Because this is somewhat odd-shaped, uh, we are only able to orient our building a certain way, and that's why we're proposing this as a seven-unit dwelling. Can we go to the next slide, please? Just a different view of Culver as you're coming down to the dead-end. The left-hand side is the building that would be raised, uh, with the new building being proposed on the site. Next slide, please. So here's a rendering, and, uh, we do have Adam Glassman here, who is the project architect. There have been some updates to the rendering based on the community process, and I do have those in the board of, uh, appeal plan list before the board today. Uh, most importantly, and this is based in large part upon comments that we did here through the community process, uh, four of these units will be actually three bedrooms, uh, and two of the, um, uh, three of the units will be two bedrooms. The reason for that is, the comments that we did here is that the, uh, goal was to see, uh, as many family-sized units uh, being incorporated into a project like this for this, uh, residential neighborhood. Uh, so the change in the project actually resulted in a reduction of the units. I believe the notice says eight. We're down to seven units, and again, the mix being four three-bedroom, um, and three two-bedroom units. The average size of the units are almost thirteen hundred square feet. More importantly, uh, with respect to issues such as planning spots and things that are happening in and around the community, uh, we are occupying only twenty-one percent, so the footprint of this building, uh, is, is a twenty-one percent lot coverage, uh, which leaves us about five thousand square feet of usable open space that we intend to keep as common area for this building, which is intended for homeownership as well. So these would be seven condo units with a substantial amount of open space and limited impact on our butters both left, uh, and rear of the property. If we could scroll down to the next slide, please. Uh, these are just some three-D views, uh, showing the, uh, orientation of the back of the building and the front of the building, the comparisons. One of the things that we did change again is to try to pull those decks in uh, to create a little bit more privacy, uh, for neighbors, surrounding neighbors in the area. Uh, if we want to go down to, um, uh, slide fifteen, uh, that's our site plan. I think that's an important, uh, place to stop off next. Right here is perfect. Uh, so we are also proposing, as you can see on the layout here, when we do combine the lots, there is a total of sixteen parking spaces. I know the board may react to that in a way, it's simple. That's certainly a lot of parking. Again, part of the concern that we did here in this neighborhood is that parking is a concern, is an issue, uh, and since we do have a substantial amount of space on the site, uh, we were able to accommodate, uh, some of the comments and concerns that we did here from the neighborhood. So in doing so, we created a total of sixteen spaces, and as you can see, towards the bottom of the screen, a substantial amount of buffering between us and our directive butter to our left, who I believe is on the call, uh, who we've worked very closely with in, uh, getting, uh, to have support for this particular project. You can also see the relationship of the other green space that is around the building, uh, including all that area that will remain as common. When it comes to the relief that's necessary, we've tried to design this building in a way that respects the current zoning, but also plans for future zoning for the area. Uh, the first variance that we do require, however, is free use. Being a two-F four-thousand district, uh, this is, uh, considered a multifamily use and therefore, uh, would require, require relief. But as you can see, uh, even though we do meet the frontage requirement, the orientation of the lot would not allow for us to subdivide this lot into, uh, buildable separate lots, so instead, we are proposing this as a single building. Uh, and again, being, uh, the density for this area being two thousand square feet for each unit, we would be under, uh, what the allowable density would be. In addition, uh, the rear yard setback typically in this district is forty feet. However, uh, we are setting it back, it looks like at about eleven, maybe a little over eleven feet, to our, uh, rear decks off the back. Uh, our buttock to the rear is Constitution Beach. There is no, uh, other residential property uh, that could ever be contemplated back there. That is, uh, a state-owned, um, conservation and, uh, parkland behind us. So, uh, while we do, uh, I, that come a little bit, uh, closer to the rear property, as would be normal for this district, uh, we aren't impacting any other property to our, uh, to our rear. Uh, and what that's also allowed us to do is to push our building a little further back And what that's also allowed us to do is to push our building a little further back into the site, which again was to address some concerns of our directive butter on Culver Street that would be adjacent to our parking area. With respect to the height of our building, and we can probably jump back a few slides to our elevations, the zoning district actually, I can go forward, there we go, perfect. The zoning district actually allows for a 35-foot height limit, which we're at. So the peak of our building is at 35 feet. However, from a design standpoint, the zoning code says that there cannot be more than 2.5 stories. I think Adam has done a pretty good job of trying to capture some of the press that we do see in the area with the pitched roof. So even though this is considered to be a three-story building, the design elements that were included, which are trying to reflect some of the two-and-a-half story that we do see in and around the area. We pretty much meet all of the other requirements of the current zoning. As I mentioned, the open space for the site is about 5,000 square feet. That's about 750, almost 720 square feet per unit. They do have outdoor balcony space and decks, and we certainly would incorporate a lot of common area for the for the building itself. With respect to parking, the only requirement is that we would have 12 spaces under the code. We are providing 16 again because we do have the availability to do that. Certainly willing to listen to the board's comments as it relates to any parking configurations or additional landscaping that would be would be needed. With that, I will pause and ask if there are any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Just to confirm, when did you change from eight to seven? It's just noted as seven in the notice.
Yeah, so that was sometime, I believe, earlier this year. The updated plans would have been filed with with ISD and then brought over to the board.
Got it. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done, can I open it up to public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venitas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted various Butters meetings for this project. The latest Butters meeting took place on October 5, 2022. Butters liked the design and the family-friendly size of the units, but they also expressed concerns regarding the size of the building itself and potential loss of parking. The applicant also met with Harborview Neighbor Association. The group voted to oppose with 42 residents against and one in favor. They expressed discontent with the size of the building. The applicant was able to work with the directive butter, and for that, we received two letters in support, one from the directive butter. At this time, our office would like to refer all judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Para. I am the East Boston Liaison for City Council, Gabriela Coleta. We understand that the proponent has worked diligently to come down in scale, height, and unit count to the point that there is one abutter who is in favor of the project. We respect that work and the opinion of the abutter. Nonetheless, other abutters on this street have concerns about this parcel turning into a seven-unit dwelling in comparison with other homes in the community. With Planning East Boston coming down the pike respectfully, we do not think that this project is aligned with the scale on this particular street or with Planning East Boston. Therefore, Council Coleta would like to go on record and position of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip, something, can you state your name and address for the record? Tell us that you're in support of opposition.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Philip Ranjor Fordy. I live at 178 Culver Street. I'm the director butter, me and my wife. We were opposed to it at the beginning, but we worked very diligently with Attorney Lins and the owners of the new property. We support it and we don't oppose it. And they, you know, they met all the demands with pushing it back. Parking, parking's a big thing. I think we need the 16 parking spots because of the neighborhood. It is a dead-end street, and parking's very tight down there. So having those 16 parking spaces is big for us. So we are in favor and not opposed.
Thanks. Okay, skip that. Skip the testimony. I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Mr. Hampton, do you have an opinion based on eight versus seven?
Eight versus, we still think that the building is too big, even with just the reduction to seven units. We recommend it to not without prejudice because it's just too big.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can just briefly respond, and I understand we are, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I understand we are in transition, and I know that the Planning East Boston conversation, you know, pretty much, you know, is what everybody is relying upon at this point. This lot, when combined, is a 15,000-square-foot lot, would certainly be unique in relation to all of the other lots in and around this particular area. It's, as I said, four times, we four times the size of what the minimum lot size is currently. And, you know, for the density at 2,000 square feet per unit, you know, we're at seven units, which would be about 14,000 square feet on the current zoning. I don't anticipate Planning East Boston to be, you know, reducing density. You know, if anything, it'd be increasing density throughout the neighborhood. So I understand all the concern of Planning East Boston, but we also have that in mind when taken into consideration things like lot coverage and open space. And in this particular case, we feel that, you know, a 15,000-square-foot lot on many other projects I've done, you know, would certainly yield a proposal of a much grander scale. We wanted to be sensitive to that, and that's one of the reasons why we've limited this to a seven-unit building, stuck with the three bedrooms because that was important to the neighborhood, you know, and obviously opted for homeownership with a good amount of open space. So I just, I want to make sure that the board, you know, understands that not every case, just because Planning East Boston is looming in the background, you know, isn't taken into consideration. We feel that, you know, neighborhood residential 50, this would be very consistent with those plans if they're adopted ultimately by the BPDA.
Can I ask another question for clarification?
Of course.
The FAR, am I reading it correctly, required as 0.8, but your proposal is actually 0.63? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's incomplete, yes, Ms. Barazza, through the chair.
Is 0.8 correct as required?
Yeah, 0.8 is the max. We're at 0.625, so we're below.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do have a question. Attorney Lins, this, I'm struggling with just the amount of paving on the site, and it just reads as auto-centered to me. Were there any concepts that sort of prioritize like the building instead of the first thing you see is the parking and the entry to the parking area?
So, great, great question. I think that part of the original plan looked at, you know, reorienting parking in a different portion of the lot. I think we would eat up a lot more open space. This, this area for parking, you know, requires the least amount of, I guess, lack of a term, least amount of driveway to get to a different portion of the site for where we want to put the building. The directive butter to our left who did speak, you know, had raised those concerns as well, and that's why we have a pretty substantial landscape buffering in between his property and our property, and certainly willing to look at, you know, additional BPDA Design Review for that parking area. And I think also, one of the things that I probably failed to mention is that looking at previous pavement on the site is something that was requested. I think we don't have any issue with that as well.
How many trees do we lose?
There's a tree in the rear of the property that we, I do believe we share with the directive butter. We're, you know, happy to preserve or happy to prune or happy to do what works best because I think it is somewhat of a nuisance to the butter on the left. I think that's the only tree that's in question. That's the one closest to the MBTA right-of-way.
I thought it was the tree next to the property. I'm looking at Google Earth, and there's a huge canopy.
I don't have it.
Next to 184, because you're proposing to build on that property, right? That's vacant right now.
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I want more. Can you speak to the main entrance that it's, we have information it does not abide by building code standards?
I'm not sure if we can jump back to our site plan, but I think just understanding the orientation of the lot. We have, wherever we've located the driveway to come onto the property, you know, is essentially what I would argue the front-facing portion of Culver Street. I mean, Culver then, you know, the property line then takes a 90-degree turn at the dead end. So we would have to orient the building in a way either to face Culver Street with that front entrance or create some sort of arrangement with a, yeah, there we go, or create a front entrance on that right side of the building behind parking space 12. And that's probably not going to be a very good design. Again, these are things that we can certainly willing to address as part of design review, but I feel that that's the only option here based upon the shape of this lot, that we wouldn't be able to have a straight head-on unless we move the building, you know, a different way and put the parking behind that.
Katie, to resolve the issue of entrance, if you were to get rid of the four parking spaces that are kind of right next to each other to the left, you can actually push the parking spaces down and create a connection or a walkway. But the idea would be that you should have a connection from the front to your entry. So I think it's really about site planning to let people know where your front door is.
Can I speak again as the director butter? Getting rid of, getting rid of parking on that street is, it's just, we're overwhelmed. We need parking. All due respect, I am the director butter. It's in.
Sorry, Jessica, did you want him to?
I'm sorry.
Is he still on?
Yeah.
Did you want to finish your statement?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is all due respect, it's in my backyard, and it's right down the property line. We need the most parking as possible. It's a dead-end street. If we take parking spaces away, it's not going to work.
Thank you.
You need the parking.
Thank you. Okay. With that, additional, those additional clarifications, can we have a motion?
I can put a motion forward. You're just going to have to be a little patient with me in terms of the proviso, but. So I think the property is like four times larger in terms of the zoning for the lot. So putting forth seven unit, I would say, is a good amount in terms of density, is actually lower than the FAR that's required. So I'm okay with the seven that's proposed. And consolidating these units should allow for more open area. And so with that, I am advocating that for seven residential units, 12 spaces should be sufficient, not 16. So I'm advocating to remove four of the parking spaces to the left to allow that to be more open green space for the unit. So the motion is approval with the following proviso. Eliminate four parking spaces. BPDA review on the site planning to work out a pathway connector from the front to the middle of the entry lobby. And the third proviso is to have the front of the building have a door for the unit that faces in front of the, of the, of the street. Those would be my provisos.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
No.
Do you want to, you don't have to, but do you want to elaborate?
In terms of what I know of the area, as people speaking up for the way that is designed and parking, excuse me, and the parking, I do believe that's, I do believe that's important.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
I also say no due to the director butter. And as far as green space, I do see, you know, open space on by the city right there with a lot of green space in the area. So there is green space in the area.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
I think that with the provisos that Ms. Better Barazza just mentioned, the project is going to improve, and I vote yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
You always leave it up to Sherry. I agree with Mr. Stenbridge and Mr. Shepherd. I think the applicant has worked closely with his abutter around various issues, and, you know, there is green space in the area, and I think parking is important. So I also vote no. So the motion does not carry, and we need another motion.
And if no, this is higher, Madam Chair, if no motion was presented, that would be a straight denial, or another motion could be denied without prejudice.
So the options are denial, deny without prejudice, or approval with whatever provisos. So can I have another motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
I want the proponent to consider the recommendations that the board made to improve the project in the access. But with that, I vote yes.
Okay, got it. Ms. Better Barazza?
This is a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Well, no, I'm still uncomfortable with the amount of parking.
Okay, Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you.
We will return to the review discussion for 11:30. Next on the list is case BOA 1406531, the address being 185 East Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the architect, Tim Johnson. Madam Chair, our revised plans triggered a building code refusal for the proposed vertical lift for handicap access through a full-story. We will be seeking the variance through the state, but I wanted to be sure to add this to the record so there is no confusion with ISD. With that being said, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a proposal to combine three parcels, 185 E Street, 183 E Street, 164 West Ninth Street, with a total lot size of approximately 3,357 square feet to erect a new four-unit, three-story, multifamily residential dwelling with six below-grade off-street parking spaces. Just want to draw your attention to page six of the plans here, right? Yep, perfect. So vehicles will access the building off of West Ninth Street via an 11-foot-wide driveway, which will lead to the below-grade parking. Approximately about five feet will have to be dug below grade to accommodate. We are located within a multifamily residential sub-district. If I could direct your attention to page 13, please. Parking level will contain eight spaces ranging from two spaces 8x18, two spaces 7x16, and another two spaces 7x18, which resulted in a parking violation, a design violation. There will also be a wheelchair lift access, as well as a trash storage, bike storage, and a utility room. Unit one, we can scroll to the next page. Unit one will be approximately 1,230 square feet, located on the first floor and part of the second floor. It will consist of a three-bedroom, living room, dining room, and a two-and-a-half bath. Units two will be approximately 1,340 square feet, located on the first floor and part of the second. It will consist of a three-bedroom, living, dining, and a two-and-a-half bath. Unit three will be approximately 1,461 square feet, located on part of the second floor and third. It will consist of a three-bedroom, living, dining, and a two-and-a-half bath. Units four will be approximately 1,492 square feet, located on part of the second floor and third. It will also consist of a three-bedroom, living, dining, and a two-and-a-half bath. You'll notice from the rear, units two and four will have small balconies, small balconies located in the rear of the building, approximately 67 square feet. The roof plan will consist of mechanicals only with bulkhead access. As for the violations, you'll notice there's a violation for height, as height being the proposed is 35 feet, which is under what is required by Article 68. However, since the existing structure is being demolished, the max height allowed is at that height of 26 feet. Again, height is compliant under Article 68. If I could draw your attention to page nine and page 11, those will show views of the actual property. those will show views of the actual property in existence. And this view that you have in front of you now is the actual elevations compared to the right side and to the more recently approved project on the left-hand side. As you see from the right, that is a building, a four-story building. We have another violation for insufficient lot size. 2,000 square feet of lot area is required for the first unit and 1,000 square feet of lot area for each additional unit, which will require us to provide 5,000 square feet. And again, we have 3,357 square feet. We also have a rear yard setback violation here. The requirement is 15 feet. The existing structure in its place now is less than three feet to the property line. We're actually going to increase that setback by approximately, will be three feet from the property line with the new proposed building. There was also a violation for the front yard, but it's my opinion this was given an error as the violation is for window designs projecting into the front yard at the second and third stories. There's no such violations as stated to govern air rights. However, we do conform with Public Improvements Commission's requirements for bays encroaching on the public way. In concluding, I believe the massing and the density of this proposal is in line with the BPDA's recommendation of approval for this proposal. And again, their proposal was recommending approval when it was at a higher unit count of six. At this point in time, I'm going to pause for any questions from the board.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. May I take public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS has hosted two Abutters meetings for 185 East Street, the most recent one being held on May 2, 2023. The proponent made changes to the proposed building based on community feedback. They reduced the number of units and reworked and removed some of the balconies. There were around a dozen Abutters at the second meeting, and they were all still in opposition to the proposal. Their main objections were the size of the building and the underground parking. ONS has received a petition from Abutters with 45 signatures in opposition. The City Side Neighborhood Association does not support this project as it is currently proposed. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the elected officials' office?
Good morning.
Oh, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Council President Flynn's office. Council President Flynn would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors in the City Side Neighborhood Association. There was a good community process and meeting with neighbors to work on multiple iterations of the project. However, neighbors, Abutters, and the civic group continue to call attention to quality-of-life issues such as concerns about the bedroom count and exacerbating the existing parking issues in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Bill Davis?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. I'm Bill Davis, 177 181 East Street. My property abuts this building project on two sides, and I oppose this project based upon the proximity of the driveway, which is going to be one foot from my building foundation into an underground parking garage. They have not addressed the Abutters' concerns on this project. It's the size of the building, the bedroom count, the underground parking spaces, the lot line, windows, balconies, green space, brownwater issues that exist in the area. And basically, there are five Abutters, direct Abutters to this development that have the name on that petition opposing this project as it stands. Thank you. There's others that would like to speak that couldn't log on. If possible, it'd be great if the board would grant them permission to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, Marie Brady?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so this is Marie Brady. I'm a direct Abutter at 168 West Ninth Street. So I'm at the rear of the proposed building right now. I have several problems with the building. The building is, as some people mentioned, it's too big. But the big thing that nobody's really mentioned is the 15-foot setback that's supposed to be in the back of that building, which my building looks onto where the balconies are proposed. It's only three feet right now from the balcony to the fence that is ours, part of our units at 168 West Ninth Street. So I have a big problem with the setback being only three feet instead of the required 15 feet, among all the other objections that people have already mentioned.
Thank you.
Okay, Phil?
Hi, Mike?
We can't hear.
Yeah, go ahead, Phil, sorry, we lost you.
Oops, sorry about that, I muted myself. Hi, my name is Kelly Davis, and I live at 177 East Street.
So you're, I believe your family member just spoke. Can we hear from new folks?
Yep. Mike?
Oh, no, I'm Kelly Davis. I'm under Bill Davis's name.
I know, but is he related to you?
Yes.
Okay, so can we hear from some other people from different addresses? Thank you.
Correct, Bill? Okay, we're all set, thank you.
Jessica?
Okay, yeah, I have, my hands are going up and down. I don't think I have any additional raised hands. All set.
Okay.
Hi, sorry, you just heard it when the second Davis opinion was voiced. My name is Mike Del Negro of 150 West Ninth Street, which is across the street, basically, from the proposed building. I think that a couple of the points that Attorney Spitz noted that are of concern to me is the setbacks and the height variances. The existing building fits nicely with the character of the neighborhood, which is both well-maintained and smaller unit-size buildings or single-family homes. The 26-foot height requirement with the existing building, I think, is appropriate to maintain and not consider the Article 68 height development, considering that the building adjacent to it, the Davis family's home, is only marginally a four-story building and further the only adjacent building that I think has such height. The setback also, I think, is important to consider, considering that the impact to the neighborhood is significant as we start to lose green space. So in addition to the other notes that have been already mentioned, I think that that's important for us to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no additional reasons.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion? Are there additional questions or is there a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of deny without prejudice due to community opposition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barasa.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1423032, with the address of 48 Ellery Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Thomas Noto, the proponent of the development project at 48-50 Ellery Street. The site consists of two parcels, which will be combined into a new lot of 5,249 square feet. Being proposed is a new six-story building to contain 14 dwelling units with seven garage parking spaces. The zoning district is a B1 general business district under the 1964 base zoning code. This matter was deferred in order to allow for a continuation of conversations with the Mayor's Office of Housing about the project's affordable housing component. One of the two parcels here is bound by a City of Austin open space deed restriction. On May 4, we were officially notified by Chief Dillon that the deed restriction will be released in return for a higher affordable commitment from the project. To that end, my client will be providing three IDP units, two at 70% AMI and one at 60% AMI, representing a 21% affordability commitment. The ground floor of the building is, as can be seen here in this slide, would consist of a partly open garage for the parking of seven motor vehicles along with a bicycle storage room, main building entry on Ellery Street, a trash and recycling room, utility rooms, and the building's elevator and stairway cores. The next slide depicts what is a common floor plate with floors two through five. These floors would each contain two one-bedroom units of 718 and 871 square feet and one two-bedroom unit of 1,071 square feet. Scrolling down the sixth floor, which would be set back approximately 10 feet in the front, would consist of two two-bedroom units of 994 and 1,088 square feet. The roof would be occupied only by HVAC equipment. An elevator override, a periphery space for a possible solar panel, and a hatch for maintenance access to the roof. As can be seen on the front elevation, if we scroll down a bit, the building has been designed to match the height of the adjacent 60-foot, 18-unit building at 44 Ellery Street, which was approved by this board in February of last year and is now under construction. Building's materials would be masonry with a bay finished in a composite panel and lap siding, subject, of course, to BPDA design review. The plan set continuing down shows the building's four elevations as well as a number of renderings showing the building in locational context. Zoning relief is required for insufficient off-street parking as the city's preference for residential projects in such close proximity to rapid transit ranges from none to minimal. At this location, which is approximately four minutes walking distance to the MBTA's Andrew Redline Station, the proposed parking ratio is 0.5 with seven spaces being proposed for the 14 units. The other zoning violations are dimensional and reflect zoning requirements originally set in 1964. There are variances required for excessive floor area ratio. One is the maximum underzoning, whereas 3.5 is being proposed. Insufficient lot size, which, as I noted, is 5,249 square feet. Excessive building height in stories and feet at six stories and 60 feet versus the three stories at 40 feet allowed by zoning. Insufficient usable open space and insufficient side and rear yard setbacks. I point out with respect to zoning that the site is within the area of the BPDA's approved plan, South Boston Dorchester Avenue, which allows greater density and building height in anticipation of new zoning for the area. But that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Maranti. Any questions from the board?
I have one question. With the seven spaces, how will parking be allocated amongst the units?
That's an excellent question and frankly, would be, I guess, as needed in terms of when the units are leased and whether the lessee has the need for a motor vehicle parking space. I think the BPDA may have preferred to see less parking here. It is very, very close to Andrew Redline, and it would be attractive to a mix of residents, you know, who either own or don't own a motor vehicle. So obviously, there's a 50% of the units for, you know, each philosophy in terms of, you know, private motor vehicle ownership in a city this close to rapid transit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? That man had public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an Abutters meeting for 48 Ellery Street on October 12, 2022. The proponent answered all questions. At the time, two Abutters expressed their support for the project. The membership of the Andrews Square Civic Association voted to support this proposal. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Council President Flynn's office. Council President Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a thorough community process and feedback from neighbors in the Andrews Square Civic Association, who are also in support of this project. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality-of-life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilwoman Michael Flaherty, Councilor going record and supporting.
We have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Thank you, Nancy. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the project with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barasa.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move on to the hearing scheduled for 1:00 p.m. First is the case BOA 1452582, with the address being 197 Lexington Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn's business address at 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the homeowners, Eric and Kim Sembrano. Madam Chair, real briefly, this was before the board previously where they changed of use and occupancy for the entire building from three to four units and some modifications to the rear decks. My clients have abandoned the plans for the change of occupancy, which was already approved, and have reconfigured the rear deck. So the scope of what's before the board today
is limited to just the rear decks and essentially reapproving what was approved previously. If we can jump down to Slide 10, I'm trying to make this as brief as possible. It's, again, relatively straightforward. So our site plan is here, showing the existing non-conforming structure with a 20-foot by about 57-1/2-foot lot. Because this is considered a shallow lot, we are eligible for the shallow lot exception of rear yard setback, which would reduce the rear yard to about 10 feet. We're at about 9.8 feet, as you can see here. The current decks are at 14.8 feet. I do have some elevation for the next slides. But the rear yard setback is the violation that would be involved for this appeal, same violation for the previous appeal that was approved, as well as the usable open space. Because we are reconfiguring the decks themselves, and there already isn't sufficient usable open space for the property, that violation also gets re-triggered for purposes of this appeal. If we can scroll down to the next slide, we show the existing conditions. This is the deck showing it from both, I forget, zoom out a little bit. Here we go. So we see both the profile view on the left side of the screen as well as the back view of the existing decks. And if we can show the next slide, it'll show what the proposed reconfiguration looks like based upon that site plan that we just showed. So, yes, there we go. So, yeah, so reconfigure them with egress stairs out of the back. Again, we are not changing the actives of the building. It will remain a three-unit dwelling. It's just essentially a rebuilding of these decks. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. Let's take public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Venitas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for this project on March 21st of 2023. No abutters attended this meeting. Our office is unaware of any concerns at the moment, and at this time, our office would like to defer all judgments to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Basan Para. I'm Boston's LA Super City Council Governor, Coleta. We see on record the last one to Eagle Hill Civic Association, August 25, 2021. Based on the vote taken that day of tening support, eleven in opposition, the councilor would like to go in opposition of this project. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could just clarify, Madam Chair. The councilor's position was to oppose. I believe that was the old project. This has not gone back before Eagle Hill based upon the fact that we're actually reducing the project.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia? I skipped first. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 144-0851, the address being 37 Varimack Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, I'm David Sokol. Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is the parking lot across the street from the Brook Courthouse, at a corner to the New State Street building. This was an open-air parking lot run by the Frank and Leo Pagano since 1956, continuous use until the pandemic, when the Paganos retired and the last parking took over the operation of the parking lot. There are no changes proposed. Recently, trees were planted, metal fencing was added. BPDA approved everything that's there now. Unfortunately, we've been asked to come back every two years to ask for permission to continue to use the parking lot. I've been parking there for 48 years myself. I continue to park there. It's in continuous use, no changes. We're asking to have the conditional use extended without any sunset proviso at this point in time. It's the de facto only parking lot for the Brook Courthouse. And with all the new construction there, with the new paving, the new lines, removing the toilets and putting up new lighting, it's a pleasure to look at, and it certainly serves the community. And my understanding is everybody asked has been in favor of the petition.
Thank you.
Anything I can help you with?
Any questions from the board?
Yes, you mentioned that you planted some trees. How many trees did you plant it?
There were four trees planted, sir. They're in beautiful bloom right now in spring.
Thank you. And do you think there are chances to plant any more trees?
I don't really think it's within operable observance. It just wouldn't work to plant more trees around a parking lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board? Hearing done. I'll take public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Sierra D'Amico from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Applicant did complete the community process. They did meet with the Downtown North Association and the West End Civic Association, in which they did receive a lot of support from both of those groups. And at this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Vanessa Wu from Council President Flynn's office. Council President Flynn would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors in the West End Civic Association, who indicated that they are not opposed to this extension as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilwoman, Michael Flaherty. Councilor, go on record and support.
Dennis, are you looking to give testimony here?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, go lower your hand. I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion of approval with a proviso of a two-year extension with lighting, screening, and buffering.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 144-1137, with the address being 205 Newbury Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Good afternoon, this is Dennis Quill, the attorney representing the applicant. I have no camera option here presently. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm the attorney representing the applicant, Semper Holdings LLC. With us this afternoon is Phil Calicchio, who's the owner-operator. This is a request to remove a proviso, which was on this location, which was previously a Cafe Nero on Newbury Street in the block between Exeter and Fairfield. The applicant would like to occupy the space for a very similar purpose, food and beverage, and they would seek to remove the proviso, which was attributed to Cafe Nero. And other than that, there is really nothing else from a zoning perspective we're doing here. We have gone before the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. We reached out to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and after the positive meeting was nabbed, we were not required to conduct an abutters meeting. And again, literally, other than removing the proviso, there's no other change suggested by this application.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. May we have public testimony?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maggie Van Squire from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. We actually did hold an abutters meeting for this proposal. A couple of abutters at that meeting raised concerns about this particular restaurant adding to rodent and litter problems in the alley. Caponera didn't do that because a lot of their things were prepackaged. This would have a kitchen. The Back Bay Association is in support of this application, and this applicant also presented to the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, who is in non-opposition to this proposal. With that, I defer the judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like I have no additional raised hands. Comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing done. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, a lot of thirds and fourths. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. One more case to go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, the next and last two are companion cases, and the first being case BOA 142-7944, with the address being 294 South Street. And with that is case BOA 142-7946, with the address being 294 R. South Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Chavez. I'm the architect and the representative for Mr. Rosales Elise, who's the owner, and also with me is Derek Thomas, the general contractor on the project. Mr. Elise participated a few years back in DND's, which is now MOH, exploration of doing detached accessory dwelling units as part of a workshopping process that they did in several neighborhoods. Throughout the process, she was, you know, exploring the idea of converting her existing one-story two-car garage into an accessory unit to the house that she owns now, which is an existing two-family. And she decided to move forward with permitting on that process once we came out of that workshop with the city. So with that, she had to apply essentially for two applications. One of those was for the existing house to allow another dwelling unit on the property because the City of Boston does not currently have a detached ADU program. And then the other application is then for the actual garage itself and the conversion of that to a livable space. The garage is designed as a studio unit. Again, sits at the back of the driveway and will be connected utility-wise to the main house. So all sewer water and electricity will be connected to the main house as an accessory unit would be. Adjacent to the property is a VFW, so she's got some letter of permission to have fire truck access from that side of the fence if they needed to have access to that building for any reason. And the rest of the driveway would be used as tandem parking spaces as it currently is being used now. And I'm not sure if this is the original submission or if this is the updated version, but again, it's a studio, existing empty garage and will be converted into a... Yeah, this is the updated version, yeah. So again, a studio unit, kitchenette, bathroom, small sleeping slash living area, deciding to match the existing house to be in tomorrow's residential scale. And that's about it. The height will remain the same, footprint will remain the same from the exterior side of things.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, is she planning to... Is the owner planning to rent this or to have extended family living in?
She will use this herself, actually. She has family in different parts of the country and then also down in Mexico, so she tends to come and go. So she's currently renting the two family that she has, and she herself will be living here when she's here in Boston.
Okay, great, thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing done. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. I don't have a lot of information on this particular proposal, but we do understand that the applicant went to the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and received their support, as well as has been indicated to us that other community members are in support as well. With that, I defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I try have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your service today.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time.